Our discussion of guiding principles for later start times to right after public comment as requested by Brian and Stephen. Do we have any warrants?
Yes, there's three warrants. The first warrant, I move that the following name bills in the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $656.51 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payments. There are no con- conflicts, sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none here, none, one absent, six aye. Do we have any additional warrants?
Yes, two more. I move that the following name bills in the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $17,635.56 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, one absent.
And the last warrant, I move that the following name bills in the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $241,305.22 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, one absent. We have two sets of minutes and I will offer a brief moment of explanation. We have minutes from our last school committee meeting and we have minutes from our retreat. We also received a packet of the notes from all the, all the stuff that we wrote about. That is not part of the minutes. Those, that's just for, are used to capture some of the ideas, but, so we will be approving just those two sets of minutes. Do I have a motion on, on, on June 17th minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion, changes?
I have to abstain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention, one absent. And of the notes on our retreat, July 31st, any, any changes to those notes themselves? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Someone need to move that first?
Oh, it hadn't been moved?
Yeah.
Yeah, moved, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And one absent. Terrific. We received in our packet the, a draft, a document called Guiding Principles for Later Start Times.
We have public comment.
Oh, we have public comment, you're right. Yeah, I'm just trying to brush through this meeting because I want to make, I want to make my dollars. We've, we've, we've thankfully arrived at our public comment. We've rescued our period of public comment. If you would like to share some thoughts with the school committee, I would ask you to come up to the microphone, say your name. Don't forget to sign in with your address so that we can match your address with the name and, and try to keep it within two minutes.
Good evening. Jay, 26 Summit Place, Newburyport, Mass. Thank you all. I was very excited. I think the last time I was here was the last school committee meeting of the prior year and we talked about guiding principles. We heard from some people who had utilized that system in the district in Burlington and down in the Middlesex Conference, I believe. And I was really excited because lo and behold, the first school committee meeting that we're seeing this year and we've got guiding principles on the agenda. So I'm really happy that, you know, both the administration and the school committee are moving things forward quickly. I would encourage you to get the students who are juniors this year involved. I happen to have one. I think it would be great to see them speak up and advocate for themselves as to why they want later start times, healthy start times in their senior year. And feel free via social media or contacting me directly to get involved and help with anything that you need from a parental and citizen perspective. We'd certainly like to, to be there to be supportive. So thank you all very much for moving things forward. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
You can, yeah, you can.
It doesn't project.
That's only for TV.
Oh.
You speak into it for TV.
See, Jay, he projects so well. I thought that it was for TV. Anyway, hi, I'm calling Gillio. I know a lot of you. I'm at Three Warboat Terrace and I have three children in the school district. One is a junior. My daughter is going to be in eighth grade and then my youngest is going into fourth grade. So this is something that I've been advocating for from afar. Definitely been following it on social media and I just wanted to come and show my support and say that, you know, we really hope that this passes and that, you know, moves forward quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any additional comments? Comes to close then of public comment. Thank you for both. The, although, although the agenda didn't show this as a vote, our, our hope really is to agree on a set of guiding principles and take a vote on those principles today. And the plan is that once we have the guiding principles in place, the superintendent will put together a recommendation, a plan for presentation to us and the community in September. And we will, we will have some meetings, some hearings, and it will be formally put to us for a vote in November. That's the plan. But this is the first step. Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Okay. How would you like to proceed? Would you like to just offer comments, things that aren't reflected here that you would like to see reflected?
I just want to thank the people who have worked on this so far. I mean, I think it really captures a lot of what we heard at the end of, especially from the Middlesex County people. And again, it doesn't, you know, I like how you put in there that this isn't a make or break. Like, you know, again, we'll work through all these guiding principles, but if, if one of them is a little bit more difficult than the others, we're still, we're not going to give up on it. We're going to try to find a way to do it. So I like that that was added in there.
Thank you. Dave did the bulk of this, of the work on this.
I get that.
But it's good for him to get some credit for it. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think we ought to comment on one of the, have some guiding principles around one of the issues that seems to keep coming up and that would be athletics. And I think we ought to have, my recommendation would be to include something like that, that athletics should not be a limiter, but nor should we limit athletics or the town level youth sports. In other words, we need to find a way to schedule things so that our athletic program can continue, can continue to be robust and at the same time, we can keep our town sports on the court, on the field, wherever it is they need to be or to develop. And I think that was one of the things that Burlington did well. Have that as a guiding principle as well.
Thoughts on that?
We put that down as one of the external issues that's part of that list. It says finding solutions for sports events, including getting agreements from other Cape Town schools and eventually potentially lighting full of, full of field. Do you want to be more specific?
I would like to include that as a guiding principles because that's another comment I would have on this. I think it's our role to provide the guiding principles and then it's up to the superintendent and the committees that he puts together to make this happen to come up with the solutions. I don't like necessarily going in and addressing potential solutions because we're perhaps thinking ahead of the committee that's going to be doing all the work.
I think that the thrust of that section from my conversations with David and Sean is, is basically to say that the approach we want to take with this is, is a problem solving approach, not a throwing our hands up approach.
Well, that could be a guiding principle. We've got that in there. You know, because you say, while one of these situations can be considered make or break, the initiative, the district should attempt to mediate as many external concerns as, as it causes possible. I think that, that states the guidance that we need to give the superintendent. I don't know that we need to go in further detail than that. In my own opinion, as a policy wonk, I like setting direction at a high level and then letting the pros do their work.
I'm sorry, do you want to add something or nothing?
I would add athletics to the top. And I would, I would not use the example of solutions as part of what we voted on.
Would you like, look at that last one, working with Cape Town League superintendents and athletic directors as, as something you can move up? Or do you think it needs to reference, I think you mentioned like youth sports or?
I think what, you know, if we, if we look at it at the highest level possible and the strategic level, what we, the direction we want to give the superintendent is to say, we want to continue to offer a robust athletic program and a robust youth sports program. And that's part of what needs to fit into the overall plans. Whether that means working with athletic directors from across the Cape Town League or working individually, on our own, it's probably the, I would assume it's going to be the, the first of those two. But again, I don't want to put any kind of, of specific plans of actions ahead of the committee or whatever it is that we're going to convene to make this all happen, making their recommendations to us. I think it sort of biases the, the whole discussion that they might have. That's my gut feel.
I'm mildly uncomfortable with mentioning just sports as a particular obstacle or a particular, only because, you know, if people, if people want other things to be considered.
Right.
It could be, it could be band or theater activities.
Right.
Could be a whole, like, range of other activities.
Band or theater, or even if it's the childcare issue, or the teacher commute issue, or whatever their particular issue with it is. But I think I slash we left number four general.
Uh huh.
So there wasn't anything specific. There wasn't anything specifically called out or there was, couldn't be seen as we're looking at this first and foremost. I have no problems taking the examples. If you want to vote to support a document that doesn't include those examples at the bottom, that I totally, that I understand if you want to, as to not sway their thinking. I'm fine with that. That's more brainstorming than anything.
Is it, is it possible to include a guiding principles about maintaining robust after school activities which would, which we could say would include sports and all those other?
Well, I don't think we would ever, none of those would ever discuss getting rid of anything, no.
Right.
Yeah. No, I, I, and that's, I think, the point. The, the reason I was bringing athletics is because it has been brought up as an obstacle in the past specifically so many times. And even to the point where one of the reasons that things didn't progress was saying, well, we weren't able to get our athletic together, our athletic director together with the other athletic directors to see what they would recommend in these, in these situations. So that, that's why I was calling out athletics specifically. But I'm going back to your I would change the words, external concerns, because that might be, to me, that says, oh, somebody complaining, a neighbor complaining, that's not related to the school district. I wouldn't consider athletics or drama or arts or any of the other things that we've mentioned now to be an external concern. So I, I would be happy, Dave, to, to accept point number four as a guiding principle if we change that external concern and talk about extracurricular.
Have it just taking the word external off.
Programs.
So the district should attempt to mediate as many concerns that this may cause as possible. Just take the word external out.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I agree with that.
Does that work, Nick?
Because I, I think, again, I'm not, I think you want to keep this as simple as possible. And I think, you know, external concerns almost demands a definition as opposed to internal concerns. You know, what about the internal concerns? So I think concerns is just, you know.
There was a, a moment in response to sort of what Nick is saying. There was a moment that was a real epiphany for me when Superintendent Conti was talking. And that basically was that our approach really got, got stopped at that athletic director level, trying to get our people meeting their people. And what the superintendent said is, it's not up to them. That the, that, that the issue is you want to get the superintendents to support our doing this and make the accommodations that need to be made to address athletics. And that, that was a whole shift for me in, in sort of how this could possibly work. And that, and, you know, I know that you've made some initial contacts with, with superintendents and there's, there's no resistance to, to that idea that he's come up with yet. He hasn't talked to everybody yet, but, so, but that was, that was very, that, that like sliced the Gordian knot for me.
Yeah. No, I think, I think it was a very important realization for all of us. And I just don't, don't want to see that brought up again as a, as a wall.
I understand.
As a stumbling block. And, and so, I, I guess I'd be happy just deleting the word external, thinking about it.
And did you want to add one more principle to address the concern?
Well, I think that if we, if we, the only way that I think we could make it clear, but I get, again, if it were a limiter, would be to say, to say, external concerns such as, and then list a few of the bigger ones. But again, I would rather give the, the team as much flexibility as I can to make this happen because I think that's going to be important to making it happen. I think what point number four says is very important is that we're going to do it. Let's figure out what we need to resolve in order to make it happen. And so I think, I would not add anything else, removing the word external from there and understanding that it's a, a broad mandate. So removed.
And, and we're not, we're not seeing the examples of those concerns articulated as part of the document.
I took those off as well.
So the document, just the six.
I still have mine.
Yeah, so the document that we're voting on today will just be the.
Six principles.
Six principles.
With, with the change.
It's great work and the examples are spot on. I'm not, I'm not being critical of the examples. I just don't think that.
That's fine.
You know, it reminds me of my days, days way back when, when I was supervising TV production and commercials and people said, well, aren't you going to go to the shoot? It's so much fun. All the beautiful models are there and this and that and the other. And I said, no, because I don't care how they get there. I want to see the end result. And this is the same thing. I want to see the end result and I don't want to color it with my ideas or whatever. We've got very capable professionals to put it into place.
So the, the purpose behind these guiding principles is to share with the community and the superintendent of a set of very broad guidelines for how we want to proceed. And proceed meaning in a very affirmative way. Are there any other, any other comments that you would like to make about these principles? Anybody?
Is there, is there a way, and this just goes to the first one, is there a way to include some narrative regarding like theater arts and music? Because it seems to be, I mean, I really think our schools need to have a good balance and not just academic and athletic success. I, I think that, you know, there may be some times where, you know, students that are pursuing visual arts or music.
How about academic and extracurricular success?
Or just overall?
Yeah.
It's clear it's not academic.
We can take it all, I just say.
I like overall.
To improve their overall success.
Sure. Yeah, I just.
That's good.
Better.
And then.
The only reason I wrote academic and athletic is because that's what we have research about.
Yeah.
I don't have any research that says that starting later makes you a better alto at school play. I got nothing.
Watch out. People are going to start questioning our research.
So, so what you're saying is we've got a baseline here to begin.
Oh.
And then there's just one other thing and it's really about whatever the final product is here. And I was talking with our district nurse leader, Kathy Ricchio, who's in the audience to talk about the allergies. And I wanted to find out from her if she might have spoken with our current school district consulting physician, which is Dr. Loz Lundgren. And I just think it might be a good idea, whatever we formulate, we get it in front of him. Because there may be some, you know, health and wellness things that he had or, you know. So I just think that would be wise for us to do.
Yeah, there'll be a pretty wide distribution of this once we've approved it. So I think that's a good idea. We have an amended set of guiding principles.
I move acceptance of these guiding principles and ask that they be forwarded to the superintendent for him to act on them.
Second.
Next year. I gave you a year at the beginning of last year.
You know, this, this starts the clock ticking on, this does start the clock ticking.
Ready to go.
December, to, 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 what was it?
Could it count down to the loading of the district website?
Probably.
We'll get a countdown clock. What a great idea.
Those are probably two different motions. So let's just get these approved.
I'm looking forward to working with the community and I think these guiding principles are really going to assist us, the work that we need to do. It's great.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Oh, you think? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. All those in favor of approving these guiding principles for later start times?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and one absent. They're, they are unanimously approved. They are forwarded immediately to the superintendent and are obviously available to the community. And again, having these in hand, I think is going to allow the superintendent to present us with a plan next month. And we will then take feedback from the community for a couple of months with the idea of putting a vote, putting it to a vote in November with implementation hopefully beginning.
February.
February. Yeah, February. But next, the following. All right, Jay, you can clap. Okay, great. And it couldn't be more appropriate to invite Kathy Ricchio up here to talk to us about allergies.
Yes. All right. You can sit, probably easier for you to sit down there, Ms. Ricchio. First of all, before Ms. Ricchio does her presentation, I just want to thank her and the nursing staff for all the work that you've done over the years to, you know, bring an allergy policy to the table that's going to be in the best interest for all of our students and families. So I want to thank you and your team for all of your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Just from a policy point of view, I want to make sure that people understand what is here for the second reading is only the first page. It is our actual policy. All of the rest is very valuable material, but it's back up to the policy.
Correct.
Correct.
Kathy, it is quite, quite a package we got in our packet and it reflects some very comprehensive work. So please, any points you would like to make to us?
Well, I guess I, we, you know, I, I really feel that Newburyport needed to revise and organize and have a very succinct and safe management policy for managing allergies in schools. And so it's something that we've been working on for a while. And we tried to build something that's developmental so that as the children get older, they get more responsibility and the policy reflects that. I also wanted the policy to have a type of equitable lens to it so that we look and kind of have an approach that is fair to all and kind and thoughtful and teaching respect and kindness and thoughtfulness at a young age around sharing food and then moving that up as they get older, those same types of thoughts. And we, we build on top of that. And then just trying to tie in, you know, everything from transportation to the, you know, anytime they're eating food and, you know, just tying, trying to tie it all together for all the community members. This is something that other families have been asking me about for a couple of years now. So that's what we tried to put in place.
How much of the supporting documentation that's a part of this, Kathy, gets distributed to parents?
So if you have a food allergy, if you have a child with a food allergy, then you'd be meeting with the nurses and, and/or administrators. And depending on where your child is, then they would be giving you the appropriate type of guidance at that time.
I think, I, I, I should have been more clear. The documentation about what kind of snacks to bring in, what, all that stuff.
Oh.
That, that's the documentation that I think gets the community engaged. And I just was wondering what, how that gets distributed or.
Yes, you're going to get that at the beginning of the year. Actually, it's actually all coming from Sean. And there is direction for each school. And each topic's kind of discussed at each level for the family so that they'll be aware of how to be careful with snacks depending on the age of your child or that type of thing. So yes, that'll be sent out the opening day packet if this is approved.
Great. Do we have any data on how many kids are identified with nut allergies?
You know, I knew you were going to ask me that and I meant to run, I meant to run the whole district data. But we, we have at least two students in, the average is two students in a classroom have.
Superexposed allergies.
Yes. And the reason that you kind of do focus on nut allergies is the reason it causes the most anaphylactic reactions. So you build something to create the greatest safety. But also then being sensitive to fragrances, you know, there's a lot of different types of allergies now.
It's like 18 per grade level.
So it's a lot. Yeah, it's a lot of kids. It's like, was that like 15 to 20% of our kids in the district?
Two, two per classroom typically. But then you've got to add in, that's just, don't forget, there's other things, not just food allergies, that are food related, you know, celiac disease. I mean, so that's why you've got to build a program that really is robust, but yet supports everybody.
I know our, our food service is very cognizant to all of these.
Absolutely. Excellent.
Regulations. What is the kind of work that you do then to, to track the dietary requirements of, of students overall, including allergies?
Well, I think one thing that was really great was when I first got here, they really undertook becoming serve, serve safe. I believe that's how you say it.
Serve safe, yeah.
So they actually had to get some additional equipment and do some other types of cleaning to meet those regulations. And that was done over six years ago.
So it's a real restaurant.
Yes, absolutely. So that was done right away. And then they also, there's a great system with, the children are identified when they come through the cafeteria with different types. The nurses share. share with the parent's permission, the types of allergies were things of concern, so that we can be safe in the cafeteria. And she also does a lot of education every year, and the nurses and the cafeteria staff always get together around choking and any types of CPR, AED types of things, too. We do that every year. So she does a great job. Pam. And the whole cafeteria team, actually. I even have a picture of them in my office.
Sure.
I think you just answered what I was, I was gonna ask. I'm just checking to make sure it's not on here, I missed it.
Do we have anything? Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Do we have anything about the second curriculum to teach other kids?
Oh, I'm so glad you asked that. So this is what's really fun for us as nurses. So this summer, the nursing team worked on developing allergy, kind of developmentally appropriate guidance from pre-K to grade eight. And that's what they worked on for their summer curriculum project. So they're gonna be presenting that to the nursing team this Thursday. So we are, and when I talked about like building, you know, consent and sharing and that type of thing, and giving permission, that's built into that original beginning training around training food and that type of thing. The youngest grades, they've got like, we got some stuffed animals and things like that, and they, they, it's, it's really kinda fun. They found, they kinda mixed a whole bunch of different resources and things, very creative, actually, they were awesome.
Great.
So I know, they typically have like nut-free tables and stuff, I'd like that to go away, and just everything be nut-free.
So the, the nut-free tables will still remain an option for the Bresnahan School, and parents will be able to opt out if they feel their child is, you know, even if they have a food allergy and they still want their child to be able to sit anywhere, the parent now has the ability to write to themselves saying that they are fine with their child sitting anywhere in, in the cafeteria. But it still will be an option for other children. You'd need to have another, for the youngest grade kids, you really should have another option for children, because you've really gotta be careful of the peanut protein, we've gotta really be careful of cleaning off that peanut protein, and so it must be separate.
So I've heard of schools not peanut-free, but having peanut-only tables, like if you wanna eat peanut butter that badly, that's where you gotta go sit.
So we, we batted that around. That was, you know, we thought about that, and we kinda went this way. It's kind of one way or the other.
Absolutely, I mean, I'm no lawyer, but the idea of a parent opting out of something like that, kind of, wouldn't the liability still be on us? Can they really take, go, hey, if it's okay to possibly kill my child during your lunch period?
It sounds like that, but honestly, this is, this is something where, when you look at it, and I, and I, at first, when that was presented to me, and it was actually presented by a family who wanted that as an option, and so I then thought, well, I better go research this, because I, I wasn't totally comfortable with it in the beginning myself.
Yeah.
But, you know, believe it or not, it actually is a pretty common practice in elementary schools.
Okay.
And actually, I think it's actually a very valuable tool, because you also need to have the student, like when we say that a student can self-administer medication, they can give their own EpiPen, they're able to give their own inhaler, well, the regulations in Massachusetts say the doctor can allow that, the parent can allow it, but it's actually the school nurse, it's in the regulations, we have to sign off on it, the student has to demonstrate to us that they can understand their med, they're gonna keep it safe, they know how to, they're not gonna share it around, well, that's this, that's, you know, older kids. But that same type of principle, if we've got this younger student, first grader, second grader, and the parents feel that they're able to sit at whatever table, then that's part of understanding those consequences and making those decisions. So that's part of supporting the families to make those decisions.
I think it also doesn't make the kid feel kinda ostracized, being at the separate table?
If they don't.
You have to sit over in the corner, type of stuff.
And it's, you know, they do a great job of having people sit with them, with friends, and the cafeteria staff does a good job.
Yeah, doesn't the Bresnahan have a thing where, okay, you're, it's your day to be like a new friend type of thing, where they sit with those kids?
I.
Kids not without allergies will go and sit at the peanut-free table.
Yes. They have to have a cafeteria lunch, but yes.
Right, they have to have a cafeteria lunch.
These are very good questions.
My kid eat peanut butter every day, so we're gonna make some changes in our house.
Peanut butter's, you know, we still welcome peanut butter during lunchtime, for sure, you know, I mean, it's a great.
Especially as they get older, too, right, there's a lot.
Absolutely. And they can then be safe.
Nick?
Yeah, I'd just like to say something, as somebody who's read and reread and reread and reread every policy, we have two most refreshing words I found here in this policy, and the way that were actually supported throughout the policy made them so refreshing to me, or age-appropriate.
Yeah.
I often think we try to make a policy that covers the whole district, and sometimes we've got to remember that we, the children that are entrusted to us at kindergarten are very different than the kids that are entrusted to us at high school, but they're still entrusted to us. And so try to make those two.
Yeah.
Demographics fit the same policy is often a major challenge, and I think you've done it by saying, yeah, there are differences, and this is where we're going to address them, and it's, it's a great policy, I thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
I guess I have one question.
What's there?
Food celebrations only be allowed if curriculum-based?
Yes.
The birthday thing is fine, no cake, or whatever. But at the end of the year, there's definitely gonna be a thing at the Bresnahan level, at least, where they ask people to bring in carrot sticks and other stuff, so they're not gonna be able to do that anymore? Like the year-end celebration, I've been to three of them.
It's also with principal approval, and if it's curriculum-based, and Sean Gallagher says do it, then we do it.
Okay.
If it's food. If it's carrots, I'm like.
Are you not gonna be there yet? If it's a cupcake eating contest, he'll be there first time, first thing.
No, I think.
They're bringing in carrots so that you don't cut.
He'll eat carrot cake.
He'll be pushing broccoli soon.
So it's basically up to the principals at the end of it, right?
It's basically up to the principals.
Yes.
Absolutely. And, you know, I, I want you to know that we want people to celebrate, and we want it to be a joyful place.
Oh, I agree, there's sometimes too many celebrations. I'm just thinking the very end of year one, which I think almost every class does here, you have the parents come and everything, you know, we go and sit there and see all their projects over the year, and then, again, there are carrots and other non-fun food. Okay.
Yeah, but then they go out together with their friends, and they have all the fun food they want.
Any questions or comments? But it just seems to me that on, on every level, these policies really address things in a very humane way, that, you know, you're, it's, you're age-appropriate, they're cast in sort of positive ways about how we can support the kids.
Yeah.
And they're very, they're very kid-centered. So I, you know, this is, it's really terrific work. And, and even the curriculum that's come out of it is great.
Well, it, it really is a team effort, it wasn't just me, so it's really the whole team, so. And Sean gave me like three things.
I move approval of policy JLCF, life-threatening food and other allergies, and move approval of it second reading.
Second?
Options policy.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, one absent, unanimously approved, a very, very comprehensive and well-written set of guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Ken.
So Sean, I'm gonna turn over the next item on the agenda to you, summer facilities project update.
All right. So tonight in the audience, that's gonna do his presentation, Steve Burcom, for another department head, and another department that's been doing tremendous work throughout the district, especially with the Kupola and the Morrel Walkway, and I think this will give this update for the school committee, but also our community at large on all the different projects that were completed, and then some of them that are still underway, so take it away.
Thank you, Sean. Sean mentioned you asked me to come here today to give you an update on the projects we've been working on this summer, as well as our efforts to get the buildings ready for the return of staff and students in a couple of weeks. So I'm gonna start with the, I'm gonna start with the custodial work. You know, they're doing their usual bang-up job, getting through the buildings, you know, taking all the furniture out of all the classrooms and offices, cleaning them top to bottom, stripping and waxing floors, you know, and just going over things in, in a lot of detail to make sure, you know, things look as good as they can, and they're as clean as they can be, and healthy as they can be for, for when the kids come back. So at the, at the high school in Bresnahan, right now, we're in, we're in really good shape. We, yeah, we, it's kinda was a perfect storm for us this year. We had, didn't have a bunch of snow days to make up in June, and we're not coming back until after Labor Day, so it's almost like we had two extra weeks this summer to, to work on things. So as I said, high school in Bresnahan, we're in really good shape. Knock-Moan, we're playing catch-up a little bit. We had a retirement at the end of the school year. I should mention Remy Darling's name, he was a custodian at the middle school, he'd been in district for thirty-four years, was our lead custodian at the middle school for longer than I'd been around, and was really a driving force in that building, keeping things up and, and really pushing things along. So when he retired this spring, it was, you know, well-deserved, but it was a bit of a loss for us. We've spent the summer shuffling people around from, to different shifts and filling in gaps, and we were just, within the past week or so, got them up to full strength. They've been, they've been shorthanded all summer, so that's why we're playing catch-up there a little bit. They were in this past weekend doing some catch-up stuff that'll probably be in next weekend, too, so I'm confident they're gonna have the building as ready as, as it ever is to welcome the kids back in a couple of weeks. The maintenance crew, you know, I can't say enough about these guys. They, they could work seven days a week and, and still not get to the bottom of their, their to-do list. There's just so much to do, and, and these guys churn out a lot of work, and just a wide variety of different things that they do, from painting to fixing lights, to plumbing repairs, putting together and fixing furniture, fixing shades. But one of the most extensive things that they do over the summer is, is a very overall servicing of the HVAC equipment. They go through every piece of equipment clean, lubricate it, they've changed out over six hundred and twenty-five air filters this summer, washed another fifty to sixty of them that are washable, and also replaced more than a hundred drive belts in, in different pieces of HVAC equipment, so. And, and just, you know, six hundred and twenty air filters is a lot of air filters. And it's not just changing them out, it's getting them to where they need to be, they need to get them up into attics and onto roofs, and, you know, it takes the whole maintenance team, plus the summer help, to go through and, and get all that done, so, you know, great job by those guys as well. One of the other things that we do every summer is a lot of testing and inspection of our safety systems, you know, the fire alarm system, everything is, the, the smoke detectors are all clean and tested, sprinkler system gets checked, the kitchen hood, fire suppression system gets inspected, the hood gets cleaned, all the grease is out of there, and then the fire department comes through and does their walkthrough to make sure that we've done all these things, and, you know, they look at various things throughout the building, so that was done last week. The health inspector has to sign off on our applicant, our certificate of inspection. He doesn't actually come through until October, when the kitchens are, are operating, but he signs off, and then I walk through with the building inspector, so we've got a lot of eyes on these buildings, making sure everything is, is done, that we need to get done, and the buildings are safe, and things are operating properly. One, one task that we added this year was the preventive maintenance program for our kitchen equipment by an outside contractor. The last couple of years, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of money on broken-down kitchen equipment, things not working, the dishwashers and ovens and various things. So we've implemented, implemented this program to try to head off some of those problems, and so twice a year, this, this contract will come through and go through every piece of equipment in the kitchens to try to prevent problems from happening and keep things operating at peak levels, and make recommendations to us for which equipment we need to be budgeting for to replace in the future. So I think that's gonna hopefully work out well for us. Projects. So a few small projects. The NEF funded a project to build a storage closet at the high school for the robotics program. They have really outgrown their, their space, the classroom that they use, so we were able to chop off about six feet from the back of a, an existing classroom and create a closet that's got a lot of storage space in, in that for them. So I think that's gonna be very helpful, that was done early in the summer. The middle school gym floor, we've had sanded right down to bare wood. The new game lines are being painted on it as we speak, they were still there last I checked, a little while ago. And then a couple coats of polyurethane will be put over top of those game lines over the next couple of days, and the floor will be ready to use by next week.
You know, that was part of home court advantage at the knock, right?
What's that?
That was part of home court advantage at the knock, none of the other teams knew which line was line, they were always stepping out of bounds.
That's right.
How, how, how often do you have to strip the floors?
Last time that one was done was, I believe it was actually the year I started, which was about seventeen years ago. So I'd say.
So we got a little ways to go for the next one.
Ideally, how long?
About ten years, every ten years, we're supposed to.
Well, it, it depends on how, how it's used and how it's maintained. The other two floors this year, we, we just did a screening and re-code, which is what we do on all the floors every summer, so if you keep up with that, that helps to extend the life.
Yeah, seventeen years ago, I mean, that knock court was getting used more than any court, so now we've got some other.
Yeah. So, you know, fifteen to twenty years, I think, is a pretty good timeframe. The high school was last completely done in two thousand and six, but, you know, it's actually in pretty good shape right now for something that's, you know, that was done that long ago, so I think that's gonna hold up for a while before we need to completely redo that one.
Thank you.
Right at the beginning of the summer, when the custodians were cleaning the furniture out of one of the classrooms in the, the Molen section of the building, they found a lot of water on the floor in one corner of the room, and we traced it back to a storage closet where there was a water heater leaking, so we had to get that, have that water heater replaced, and put in some safeguards to make sure we don't get a problem like that again from that. Fortunately, it didn't cause any, any real damage. The walkway at the high school, that's going well. The concrete is gonna be poured over the next two or three days, and the walkway, if you've gone by, you've probably seen that they've put forms out over the last few days out there, so they're gonna pour the concrete in three pours over the next two or three days, depending on the weather. And then they'll come back next week and, and do the brickwork for the plazas and, and get the granite benches set in place. So the, the walkway and the plazas themselves will be complete before the start of school. In September, we'll come back and put the monument in place for the monument, the Morrel Monument. We'll install a couple of interpretive sign panels, which, one of them kinda describes Mayor Morrel's contribution to having the high school built on that. Mayor Morrel's contribution to having the high school built on that site back in the thirties, and the other one talks about traditions at the high school. And then also in September, probably towards the end of September, when things start cooling off a little bit, we'll plant the, we'll do the landscape planting around the edges of the plazas and along the walkway.
Steve, I have a question that sort of follows up on this, and maybe you were gonna get to it, but when I was coming in today, I noticed that at the entrance on High Street, there's, some of the wall is down, partially down, and my question, and I can remember city councilor who was always talking to us about getting that wall reconcreted, you know.
Re-pointed.
Did that, was that an accident or did that just give way?
That was, that was a car that crashed into that several weeks ago at this point, I guess. The same contractor who's building, who's doing the walkway project for us, is gonna fix that, and he just assured me today that they'd get that fixed before school starts as well. But, yeah, that wall fell apart pretty easy for the size of the car that hit it. It wasn't a big car, so, yeah, that wall still needs work. Absolutely does.
I think a bicycle could have probably done the same damage.
Yeah.
I think it's their insurance paying for that, right?
Their insurance paying for that, yes. And the cupola project, you know, we knew, we knew from the beginning that we were gonna be pushing the envelope on this one. It's a tight schedule. You know, today, we had roofers and carpenters both on site. Roofers are kind of the key to the whole thing right now. They've been working their way from the top down, and you've probably noticed some of the scaffolding has come down and revealed some of the work up above. So, the plan at this point is for the roofers to finish their work, the carpenters are kind of working alongside them. Carpenters today were actually working on repairing some additional rot that was found in the roof rafters along one side of the cupola. There was sort of some hidden damage that we didn't know about beforehand, but that's gonna get fixed up. The painters will follow. Once the roofers move down a level, the painters will get up to the area above them and finish what they've got to do up there. So, the goal is to have the scaffolding down before school starts and to finish any additional work off of lift, off of a lift, to get things done over the next, hopefully, it'll just be a couple of weeks into the school, the school year, to finish things up. So, it's not gonna be completely done before school starts, but hopefully, the scaffolding at least be down. And the contractors know that they've gotta work around the bus schedules once that happens.
Right, right. So, it will be taking place during school day?
There will be work during the school day, yeah. Most of it'll be painting, so it shouldn't be too noisy. The roofers are the kind of the noisiest ones at this point. They should be all done. I think it's gonna be a lot of just touch-up punch lists sort of things, painting. And the dome is actually gonna be painted again, even though it's been painted. The painter sort of jumped the gun on ordering the paint for the dome without getting the approval of the architect first, so they got a color that's not quite what we were expecting. So, they've gotta paint it again at their expense. So, that's, you know, they're gonna have to do that from a lift. So, it's a different project.
There's a long tradition of contractors and the high school not coming to a conclusion when they need to and how they need to.
Yeah, well, we're still keeping their feet to the fire to get them there this time.
Do you guys have pictures of all this?
Yes.
So, like, there'll be like, at some point, some slideshow, slide deck, like documenting all this stuff?
Could do something like that, yeah. I've been taking pictures pretty much every day. The architect says lots of pictures.
Give them to a student to make like a movie or something.
Could do something.
I'm moving out of them.
Post it on the website?
Yeah, I think that'd be great. The Wall of Fame project's going on, too, right now, right?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna mention that, too, even though that's not really a facilities department project, that's more being driven by the athletic department and the Wall of Fame Committee. But they, as you probably know, last year, they took down all the plaques and the, both the Wall of Fame plaques and all the championship plaques from the gym hallway at the high school. And that project, I think, turned into a little bit more than they were bargaining for. So, this year, they hired a carpenter to put up new plywood display boards all down that hallway. It looks really good. He did a really nice job. So, now, they're gonna come in and paint those boards, I assume, in the crimson color, and then start getting the plaques all mounted back up, so that's going well. And the other high school project that I didn't mention here is the weight room renovation project.
No, it was great.
That turned out really nice. That's got a ton of use this summer. Kids have loved that in there. So, that's, that was a, that was a nice little project to get done as well.
Awesome. Terrific.
Anything else on projects?
Any other questions?
All right, and one other thing I wanted to talk to you guys about while I was here tonight. Back in April, I was here with Molly Ettenbauer, the energy coordinator from the city, Mike Strauss, and Don Walters from the mayor's energy advisory committee to talk about a non-bill solar credit program that we wanted to participate in, where we were getting about $277,000 in solar credits applied to our bill, which equated to about a $41,000 annual savings on our electric bill. We had asked for your approval to participate in that program. You guys voted, I believe unanimously, for that. Just last week, we were offered the opportunity to participate in an additional program with the same company, Nexamp, for an additional $100,000 in solar credits, which equates to another $15,000 in savings on our electric bill per year. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and ask for your approval to participate in that, that program as well. That program will actually start producing savings for us sooner than the one that we spoke about in April, because those construction projects are already underway. So, we would expect to see savings from that project the first half of 2020 and the other projects towards the end of 2020 or the second half.
Steve, is there a deadline, a timeline by which we have to make a decision to vote? I mean, is it like, we've gotta have it in place by September first?
You know, I honestly don't know the answer to that, Bruce. This, like I said, was just brought to my attention, I think, Wednesday last week, and they just asked me to run it by you guys and see if it was something you wanna do.
This doesn't cost anything.
It doesn't cost anything for us.
So, do we need to vote on something like that?
Yeah, we do have to.
Anything that happens on our facilities, physically on our facilities, we need to approve.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions before we take a motion? Steve, anything you want?
Well, I guess, you know, if we're gonna think about voting on this tonight, I'd like to hear what the superintendent might recommend.
Yeah, I mean, I think, as Steve said, this is, you know, kind of just a win-win in the sense of, you know, we're not paying anything towards this. We enter, enter this program, it's the same company that our school committee's already approved, and, you know, on the surface, and what Steve's telling me, it's additional savings on our electricity bill, so, you know, I would move to support it.
Do we have a motion?
So, moved?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, thoughts?
Thank you.
It's a good comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? One absent? Unanimously approved again to?
Save money.
Save money.
Always a good thing. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we usually get to vote on spending it, but almost never get to vote on saving it, you know?
How many times Steve comes before us, there's savings?
There's savings, yeah. Actually, that is, that's true.
Which we greatly appreciate.
Next item on the agenda is the, just a summary, basically, of our summer retreat. You have both the minutes and the notes. What I would say, it was very useful discussion. We've got still a long list of topics that are gonna be coming up at school committee meetings over the next couple of months for us to continue to have discussion. The suggestion about new members' orientation is already being implemented. We're in the process of putting together a binder with a lot of information for the new school committee member we will have in January and setting up meetings with her and both with me and with Sean. One of the recommendations I'm going to make to Sheila is that she have a cup of coffee with each of you, so you can talk about your experiences on the school committee and your feelings about being in the school committee and the things that are challenging and the things that you enjoy about it. So, you may be hearing from her, and I would encourage you to have conversation with her. The reason I am able to identify this person is that the upcoming election is gonna have three people running for three seats. This is, this is my eighth citywide election, and it is the first time that I am running in a non-competitive election, so I think I'm losing my touch in some ways, but, so anyhow, so we have identified the individual who is gonna be joining us, and she's very excited about that. Sean and Joanne will verify that I have been pressing them to make sure that we get packets out more quickly. I'm gonna move, usually, I meet with Sean in the first half of the week. I'm gonna make sure that when Sean and I are going over the agenda, that we meet earlier than that, you know, probably on Mondays, we'll have a standing meeting, so that we can get the agenda out and agenda items can obviously come to me. We also put a checklist in, which I think was Brian's suggestion, to make sure that all the documents were there. And future, future meetings, we're gonna talk about our role in the community, communication, openings for dialogue with the community. You know, we've got this, we have, we have a long list of work to do. I would say as a comment that I found, I found the retreat very, very helpful and really appreciate everybody being there and being as candid as they, as they were. I think that we got a lot of really good work done. Anybody wanna add to that? So, I turn it over to Angela for the assistance of testimony.
Yes, I'll be stepping, yes.
Are we gonna do the discussion for the charter review process or?
Yes, we can, yeah, we can, we can have that discussion, yes. The charter review process, the committee has been constituted and is supposed to be meeting in September. If there are, it's probably good to have this discussion here now, Steve and I, having served on the last charter review commission, Steve is actually chairing it, we can talk about some of the kinds of items that appear in the school committee section of the charter, but what are people's thoughts? For that, for that particular section of the charter, you know, we talked about membership, we talked about elections, how that all works. We didn't talk about, one of the topics that came up that Steve and I did not drive the last time, because we were conflicted about it, was the question about the mayor sitting on the school committee. So, that has not had a robust discussion at the charter review process, the first one. And if people feel like that's a topic that we should be discussing, then I will certainly bring that topic, too.
Yeah, I think it's worth discussing, sure.
Yeah, having lived with a whole spectrum of levels of involvement from mayors on school committees, I think that it's worth talking about. We've been, I think, lucky to have a mayor who has been shown a great deal of interest in the schools, and she's been a regular attendant and participant in our meetings and certainly is very well-prepared, but it's not always been the case for past mayors, former mayors. So, I, I think it's more worth discussing. I'm not sure which way I'd want to see it go, but I think we ought to talk about it.
The, the way that that will happen will be through public hearing. So, when that topic comes up, when the school committee topic comes up, the community will be notified that that's what the agenda, topic is for that meeting, and people can come and give feedback about that.
What's the, how's the charter review committee made up? I know you're representing us, but like, how's it made up by other people?
You do? Well, you know better than I, who, I don't know who all the members are.
Last time, it was like a little, right?
Right, right. The charter, the charter...
Basically, there's five appointed by the mayor, correct?
Five appointed by the mayor.
And four by the president of the city council.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's really on an appointment basis when you do a review every ten years.
It's not an election.
Right.
Like, the first time.
No, and, and I think what's, what's significant is, the first time that we went in, we all kind of promised to keep an open mind on what we're doing. So, one might say that, how do you keep an open mind if you're being appointed? Because we had to be elected to the position. So, it's, I think it's a little different. It's a little different, because at that time, we were making some significant decisions about whether we wanted a city manager versus a mayor, whether we wanted to have two-year terms versus four-year terms, which we settled on. We also could have had discussion about, did we wanna have seven school committee members or would we better, have been better served with five, you know, especially if people aren't running for the seats, you know? There's pros and cons in all the discussions, but what I found most valuable was that we all had open minds about the process, and we also had the benefit of doing a lot of subcommittee research, going out to different cities and towns to see what their types of government were, and it just, we basically came into the final part of the process with just a lot of information queued up so that we could work very closely with the McCormick Center of UMass Boston and their consultant to come in and basically go over section by section, and we would, you know, have discussion and vote. And, and again, it, you know, there was, you know, when we came to settle it out, there was a, there was a majority report, but there was a minority report, you know, and actually a significant minority report of the nine members, three were in opposition for different things. But, and, and when you look at a charter, charters that don't have, that don't have minority reports generally have a greater chance of passing than charters that do. But in this case, the charter passed because I think there was a number of folks on the minority side that felt it was, it was a good document, and I believe it has really improved government in your report, because, for instance, I'll just mention two positions, the way the director of finances has been established is really positive, and then the fact that we have a human resource director now that we didn't have before has been established. And there's a number, a number of other things that just make government better, so...
The budget meeting with the mayor?
Yes.
That's present, you know, joint meeting of the city council and school committee, where the mayor presents her budget.
Yeah, and also long-term capital...
That was written in.
Also outlining what the capital funding is for long-term plans and looking at a five-year plan. So, if, if the city wants to make a significant purchase, they have to show how the money is gonna be obtained. So, it's really, I think it's a, you know, I think government has greatly improved and... So it's really, I think it's a, you know, I think government has greatly improved and I think the city has enjoyed that. I think it helped with our bond rating, for instance. I know that from meeting with different people regarding charter stuff and I worked...
Finance controls made a big difference.
Yeah, finance controls and, so there's just a lot of things. But again, it started, that process started with everyone having an open mind and hopefully this process will too toward any ways things can be tweaked, you know, so...
Have they announced the whole committee publicly?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they have. I got my first document last week about, about who was on the committee, which I didn't think to bring today. But I know that the city council members are Sharif, Heather, and Charlie Tontar. Dennis Kennedy and I are back from the previous committee. Sheila Tantor is another person, but I don't know the other two people.
I'm just going to go, I don't know that they announced it. I read it on a Facebook post from Jane Snow.
Oh.
So it was publicized. I don't know that...
It was probably announced in the city council meeting if Jane wrote about it, so...
Right.
Yeah.
I just, I don't remember reading about it, I was just curious.
And just, you know, for clarity's sake and along our lines of communication, that's not an auspicious start.
No, it's not. Even less auspicious than that, but yes, I agree. Charlie Tontar is going to be chairing it?
I guess the two other things that I know that are written in there about the school committee, number one that you brought up is the term length because we continue to run unopposed and I think four years is a, I think that's a haul to ask for a lot of people. And I'm not sure if that's, if going to two years like the city council would get more people to run, but I think it'd be worth a try.
Yeah, the only problem when they don't go two years, you don't have overlap.
I'd say it's not verbal, you could write, so...
What's that? How does city council move if they're two years?
That's, that, we could get it, you in theory could have a totally brand-new city council. Every two years it's never been experienced government.
I might, I don't need to write the charter out, but I might suggest you could put language in so that half of the school committee runs one year and then half of the one runs the other, so you go alternating years and therefore you don't have the potential to flip the entire school committee. I sort of can't believe when I heard the city council doesn't do that, but that's neither here nor there. And again, it won't guarantee that people will run, but four years is a long time. So that's something I think we should think about. There also seems to be a clause in the charter about school committee members being able to hold city positions.
Or even be allowed to apply for city positions.
Right. Within the year after leaving school committee. And from what I understand, that clause does not apply to city councillors. So for some reason, we aren't allowed to apply for either school-based positions or any positions in the city, but city councillors are. And I'm not sure what the reasoning is, but I have to think that there are...
I'm smiling because that was the basis for my dissent.
I have, I have to think that there are educators in the district who don't run for school committee because they might want to work in the district. I know personally, had I known about that clause, I probably would not have run the first time.
We almost got out, but here you are.
So I don't, I mean, I understand nepotism and all those sorts of things, but...
It is weird because they're going to have it on the council side too.
Right, but at some level, what we're saying is the people who know the most about the district, we're going to take right off the table from ever working for the district.
Happy to bring that forward.
So I guess those three things, the mayor being part of the school committee, the term length, and the employment clause are, those are the only things that I know of that...
I don't find anything on the city website about the charter commission, just so you know.
If you're meeting in September, I feel like, I don't know.
I know the mayor was just...
I didn't know how the committee got selected. I mean, last time it was such a big deal like that, I remember the list of people you could vote for for the original.
I will say that it was, it was an interesting process and it's probably not the way I would have gone about it, but...
So I think at some point, maybe communication about the city charter process should be written into the city charter. Because we ran into the same problem, Sean, with the, when we did the strategic plan. There wasn't as much communication before, during, or afterwards as we had hoped, as I had hoped, I won't speak for everybody, as I had hoped. And begging for things as simple as, now that we're finished, can we write everybody who was involved a thank you email? Fell on deaf ears. So I think communication should be written into the city charter, at least about the city charter process.
One of the things, and I'm not going to go further, but when you do the charter process, you're required to have two public hearings. When we did the process, the last time out, we had six. So that's one way to get communication out there, just have as many public hearings as possible and try to do them strategically when you're outlining, you know, the scope and sequence of what you're trying to work at. And I think the more, and that's why I'm kind of a public hearing fan, the more public hearings you have, something like that. And we listened to those feedback and we made some changes to our preliminary report. And again, it all comes down to having an open mind and so that's one way to counteract that, public hearings.
Yeah, it was, it was fascinating work, it was very hard work.
Dry.
It was dry, some of it was very dry. But, but it was, I think, you know, it hadn't been done in 90 years. And we found statutes in 90 years.
It's like the Red Sox.
Yeah, we found, we found jobs that haven't existed in this city in 60, 70 years written into the city charter.
I just, I saw you guys, just a link, I found it on the Munich Code website, it's a standard source, so whatever Munich Code is, but it's the whole thing, so...
You want, do you have the names of the...
Munich Code?
Well, no, the actual charter itself.
Oh, the charter, yeah.
Yeah.
Charter should be...
Yeah, it's on the city's website.
It's on the city's website.
They're looking right now, can't find it. So if it's there...
Charter's not on the city website. I thought you were saying, I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought you were saying that, that the announcement wasn't on.
This is the actual charter.
Yeah.
You just emailed it.
I couldn't find any one, but fine. So, but, yeah, the note of the announcement about the hearings is not on there for sure.
It was.
Which, what's that?
Charter was on the...
You know what, you're right.
I believe it's still there.
Yeah.
I believe it's still there.
Because I made an editable PDF out of it. And sent it to Richard Jones.
Of the charter.
That's right, I can't find it now, but anyway.
Okay, yeah, so it, I think it slipped off if it's not there because it was there for a long time. Great. Any other, again, we will, when we reach the school committee conversation, there will be a public agenda and I assume we'll be doing it at a public hearing, I'll certainly push for that. So if anybody has any additional thoughts about it, you know, you can communicate to me or to any of the other members of the committee. Okay?
Not that I'm dying to not go to another meeting, but could we have that discussion at a working school committee meeting?
Our discussion?
This, discussion about the charter, the piece of the charter that involves the school committee.
It seemed, yeah, I mean, if that's what you guys want to do, we can do that. It seems like a small topic for, for a meeting when we only meet twice a month. I mean, I, why wouldn't you make it an agenda item at, at a regular school committee meeting?
Because we had talked about going to business meetings, to working meetings.
Right, but we have, we also have to continue talking about that, we haven't made, made the decision, so... I certainly, you know, I'll sit down, have a conversation with Sean about what makes the most sense, but...
Okay.
It's going to be something I think that we're going to want to talk about soon, so... Okay? Ready?
I'm ready. All right. I'll be doing two reports, the assistant superintendent report, assistant superintendent picks working on our teach point program, which we're moving towards this summer, which is an evaluation program that will benefit both the administrators and the educators and we're excited for that. So I want her to continue to work on that as we have our leadership retreat tomorrow and Wednesday with the administrative team. So just some grant updates. Title I grant, going to approve for $331,000. And this title I grant works towards reading support, title I teacher salaries, along with the, you know, grants for homeless and foster students for materials and then also literacy professional development and supplies and materials for the instruction. So just really pleased on us receiving the title I grant. We got a little bit extra money, I think because of some of those initiatives that we have going on. Title II A grant is our teacher quality grant, receiving $62,000 from the state and that's for our professional development on inclusive practices. We're going to apply that, some of that funding towards our world language program development that we've been talking about in the spring and will continue to enhance throughout the fall. And then also the Billy Donigan work with the skills-based instruction. We also received some funding under Title IV, which is our academic support and enrichment. And we're really focusing on equitable services and that funding will go towards translation services for our L students and gateway college opportunities for our most at-risk students. So we're excited about that, those grants and the funding and how we're applying those. Just some higher and mentoring updates. Throughout the district, we have 13 new teachers coming into the district and they'll be part of our induction program that starts next week and that's August 27th, 28th, and 29th. And then also you look at promoting within, we have five teachers within the district that will be moving into new roles and it's like a mini mentoring program for their new roles. And they're just really going from one position to the other within the district. So that mentoring program, it's three days, it's mentoring, the mentors also get training, new teacher orientation, professional development overview. And then what's also neat is the tour of the city is part of that, which I attended last year. So you get a lot of the rich history of Newburyport for all of our new teachers. Staffing, we have an adjustment counselor to hire at the Brez and a .5 adjustment counselor at the Mullen that we're looking to hire, the Mullen position. Working with the principals, we have some ideas on potentially utilizing current staff to enhance our counseling services there and reallocating resources. So we're in the process of developing that plan to see if once again, we can hire within and elevate some of those educators that are already in the system. What's great and we're excited about is our teacher leaders, which is part of negotiations. All of those positions, or we're very nearly full at all levels, having teacher leadership from elementary all the way to the high school. So, and I think we set management and the union president, along with our executive board and the teachers' union, I think we really came together through negotiations. Will we value teacher leadership and we're going to really work on building leadership capacity in the district? And I'm really excited, it's going to be the first time that we've had those positions filled in three years. So I just think the potential there is going to be amazing for the district. Some upcoming events, administrative professional development, so for us, we're going to be on a little retreat for the extended leadership team, that's 20 of the administrators throughout the district tomorrow and Wednesday from 8:30 to 3:00. And I'll be sending on as part of the Friday memo that you have all have missed this summer. You'll get those agendas this Friday and you can kind of see some of the topics in the work that we're doing.
I didn't miss it, I just kept rereading the old ones.
You did. And as you know, we have, the start of school is after Labor Day, so it's going to be September 3rd where we welcome our teachers back, a nice reception in the morning and then they'll go off to their buildings. And then the second day, September 4th, is really building-based and really focusing on multiple transitions throughout the district. So it gives the opportunity for the teachers for another day to really, you know, look at the class list, review IEPs, 504s, there's some transition planning at the high school with the freshmen. And I just really believe it's going to be a positive day to give that extra day in preparation for the students. And just so we talk about transitions and we always monitor students coming in, and right now we have 15 new English learners that have entered the district since June. And I think, you know, talking to Angela, that's the, the most that we've had move into the district in a long time, so that's 15 additional. And then the other good news is we have high enrollment for the freshman class. So that's like a catch-22 where a lot of the Newburyport families are coming back into the district, their freshman year to, to go into the high school. But the other piece of that is you got to start looking at class sizes and, so I think that the word is out that a lot of great things are starting to happen and especially at the high school and under Mr. Wolf's leadership, you know, and everything that his administrative team is doing, so we're pleased to see that.
Do you have a number on the size of the freshman class?
I don't, I was probably on September 3rd, school committee meeting, I can kind of give you an update on all of that. I mean, you have the information regarding school choice, that, you know, we have people on a waiting list at the freshman level that want to come into the district. And then the 7th grade and 10th grade numbers are still there, so I'm assuming we'll be at full capacity for enrollment. So we have people that are, you know, have notified us that they're going to attend, but until they register, we have all their information. So the freshmen, as I said, we're booked right now, we have people on a waiting list, 7th grade and the 10th grade, we have people that are on the rosters, but we're encouraging them to enroll. Two other things, yes?
So if we stay at three for grade nine, I mean, you know, I mean, I would be in favor of voting to let those three come, I mean, is there going to be a date where you might have to...
Yeah, I think, I think what we should do is, you know, we monitor those, you know, the school choice and then looking at the freshman enrollment, because you have the school choice, but you also have some students that, you know, are private school that are coming back to the high school, so that's where we're getting a lot of our numbers. So it's not just the school choice, but I think it's something that we can take a look at.
Do we, in terms of that, we don't have another meeting before school starts.
Right, that's why I was asking.
So maybe what might be appropriate is for us to vote, to open the waitlist, if, empower the superintendent to do that, if the superintendent makes that decision. So, so we're not saying we're going to do it, we're saying if the superintendent makes that decision, he will be empowered to do that. Does that seem like a reasonable thing to do?
So just so, so we voted to have 10 slots.
Correct.
The 10 slots?
Filled.
Are filled. We have an overall of 15 applications. Now, if any of those applications are already Newburyport residents coming back, they automatically...
They're already in that.
Right.
They're not part of school choice, right?
Okay. So those five that make up, I assume, two withdrawn and three waitlisted? So those, those are all choice applicants?
Those are all choice, correct.
So those are two that were close and we decided to let everybody in.
Sure, right. And I think if we had, and this is why I'll, I'll go back and, you know, during our leadership retreat, touch base with Mr. Wolf, look at those numbers. So you have, when you looked at the 8th graders coming up to go into 9th grade, you also, we had those numbers in June, so 10 seem, all right, you know, we can, you know, fit the 10 school choice in. But what's also happening is some of the families that were private school are now coming back. And I want to say, I'll get you the numbers, I don't want to just throw numbers out there, but it's, it's a significant amount of Newburyport families that are coming back. So those freshman enrollment from June to now is pretty high.
How does the district get notified when kids are going to private high school?
The same thing, so as part of a report, any of our 8th graders that are now... The same thing. So, so as part of a report, any of our eighth graders that are now attending, you know, you know, Essex Tech or Whittier Tech or St. John's Prep or Fenwick, we'll, we'll have that data. Yeah.
As of October first, right?
No, I mean, we can even.
You have it as you.
Yeah, we have it as the enrollment.
Right.
Comes in and forms and.
I should know if like, if there was a process where you already know fifteen kids are going to Central Catholic this year or something.
Yeah, we would know that, yeah. You would know, you would know that, you would know that from the, yeah, from your eighth grade rolls. So when eighth grade moves up to ninth grade, it's an ongoing, you know, for the scheduling. Because the ninth grade is gonna have the schedule. So we reach out to those families and some of those families say, we're not attending, you know, Newburyport High School. Oh, yes, we are. And they do all their scheduling that way. But we can, we can get the accurate numbers and I can send that out to the school committee so you can take a look at it.
With the choice, you know, our, our decision was to empower the superintendent of twenty-eight slots. And, you know, again, it isn't filling out exactly. There are twenty-eight people interested, three on the waitlist. So I, do we, do you want to be empowered to open those up if you make the decision?
Sure.
Would, I mean, I'm fine with that, but is this, is it getting too late for some of those three families? Is it two weeks before school starts?
Not necessarily, because.
I love thinking other towns are probably gonna start before.
So if it's not, if they, typically with school choice families is they apply for school choice and if they are on a waiting list. So they've already started their, you know, wherever their hometown is, they're already part of that roster. But if it opens up with us, then they would come into our, our system. And for scheduling-wise, you know, they would get, you know, whatever their recommended schedule would be. So you wouldn't, you know, shut them out of the on this class if they, you know.
When we open up school choice seats, we can't choose who to pick and who to not pick.
Correct.
These three seats, are we allowed to open up seats for these three people?
You would have to open up, so you could have, and that's why we gotta look at our numbers. So if we open up three additional seats, if you have, you know, you could have eight more people on that applied for school choice between today and tomorrow.
Right, we have to open it up generally and then say these three are the, are the first that applied for these new seats. So they, they get priority, but we could still end up, they could say no at this point.
Correct.
We've committed here, we're gonna.
Sure.
If eight more people have, then it turns into a lottery.
Then you get to a lottery.
We did do that last year though. I mean, last year, I remember we were a couple off in one of our things and we just voted like, we had a vote to let.
I agree. And I think, I think the difference is.
Especially since, you know, school choice is closed or.
Right. I think that's the difference. The, the families that are coming back have grown our freshman class from June to now.
Right.
So I would take a look. It is great news. It's a, it's that catch-22 that, you know, I think Newburyport families are enthusiastic and the ones that haven't been with us for a few years want to come back. So I think that's a great thing. Right? I can, I don't want to make a decision right now, but as Bruce said, I can go back and look at the numbers and if it's those three students on a waitlist and it's not gonna have a major impact on that freshman scheduling and class sizes, then we can make a move.
And if it does have an impact, you won't, correct?
Yeah, then we would just say, you know, you'll stay on the waitlist. If one of these ten withdraw between now and the start of school, then the next person would go in.
Is there, you don't have to answer us now because you'd need some more data, but could we find out at the next meeting when you come back if there's comparable movement in any other grades? Because we always hear that the numbers in each grade are so fluid that, and that's why we find out, for example, about class placements and that sort of thing at the end of August. Whereas I know there've been a lot of people asking to find out about it in June before they leave. And so I'm wondering, I guess this summer, I think Andy got his placements and schedules out sometime mid-July. So I'm just wondering if he has this tremendous amount of influx and can still do the scheduling. Is it possible, like, is that sort of fluctuation happening in other levels of our district?
Yeah, I think it's something, I mean, you, you take a look at. You don't make it a priority once.
I think we've always seen the freshman year as a natural breakpoint for people to come into the district and or leave the district. Coming in from the, you know, charter school and from the IC, et cetera. And it's also a natural point for people to say, oh, I'm opting into, to send my kid off to prep school. So there is a lot of mobility at that particular year.
Yeah, another, another, another sort of benchmark year for us is usually the year kids have to make a decision about going up to the middle school. That, that's always been a year where there's been some fluctuation, some fluctuation.
It's a transition year again.
Yeah.
Are parents required to tell the district that their kid's not gonna show up the following year?
Yes.
They have to tell you?
You have to, so they come in withdrawal.
You're trying to develop. So we'll reach out to families. So if you, you know, as we, as principals and the administration's doing, you know, doing the schedule, the teacher's schedule, if there's a family that was on our roster that hasn't responded, then we'll reach out to them and say, listen, you know.
I mean, I should know this. Like, every year I have to fill something out.
Yeah, right.
But every year I forget that.
Can I ask a question though?
Sure.
So I'm looking at the DESI report card. And according to this, last year, we had one hundred and eighty-nine eighth graders and one hundred and seventy-eight ninth graders. I'm thinking logically, because we're adding in kids from the charter school and from the IC, right, wouldn't, wouldn't our ninth grade number, wouldn't it make sense for the ninth grade number to be bigger than the eighth grade number unless we lose a lot of eighth graders?
It all depends. I think it depends on, on the class.
The IC, I'm just gonna throw out some historical stuff. When I went to high school here, okay?
That's really historical stuff.
If you had twenty-five kids at the IC, twenty of them would come to Newburyport High School. Today, if I'm not mistaken, out of twenty-five kids, you only get about five coming. The IC, more of the IC kids continue to other private, yeah, so.
I'm saying, and then the charter school has how many eighth graders of ours? Do we know?
I think it's, it's not a, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. You have, you have a total, what is it, two sixty-seven total there, but I don't know.
We drop by eleven kids instead of increasing last year. So I'd kind of be curious as stats. I don't know if we get information from the charter school or if we even find out who's who. Do they have to, do the charter school kids have to re-register in the district schools?
They would come back to us, yeah.
But they actually have to register? They're not just assumed students?
Well, they're, if they're residents, they can, you can always, you would have to register.
Right, but they do have to. So we do know how many charter school kids are coming over.
Yep. Usually they register for their classes. They can't just show up and say, say, it's cold, it's like.
That's all. I would just be curious as to that.
I mean, that's, that's easy to, that data is easy to get to, yeah.
I have a question that's kind of related to this. I had a parent ask and they live out of town. Do we have a program where parents who live out of Newburyport who work in the district, can their kids go to school here?
No, we don't, I don't think we have that. Like, if you're an employee here, you can bring.
Teacher, can you bring your child even if you live out of the district?
I think you'd have to fall under the school choice. You can apply for school choice.
Okay, but there's no thing that happens.
Right, right.
And it has happened. Yeah, I know, I know it's happened.
Yeah, right, but it's not a policy, I guess, right?
I don't think, yeah.
It's not a policy.
I don't see it as a policy.
Yeah, because you specifically knew?
No, I mean.
Policy is residence.
Two, two teachers that were high school, high school teachers and she, she went to school all through with me.
Well, it does happen, but they, they apply for the choice.
In my previous district in, in Beverly, if you were an employee, you would fall under the school choice. You would apply for school choice.
Yeah, I don't remember if school choice was a thing back then.
Yeah.
So if we want to give the superintendent the power to make a decision, we need to.
I move that we authorize the superintendent to add three more spots in the high school instead of twice a lot.
Second.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, one absent. You have the power then to do whatever you can legally do with those slots.
All right. And I think that just the Mullen.
Bring the three to us.
Back-to-school picnic is August twenty-eighth. And as we said, the teacher's Thursday is September third.
Carrot on.
I don't believe some committees have met unless policy has. Steve, I don't think.
No, we haven't. Probably figure out what the schedule will be starting in September.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just one, I just want to comment a couple things. And we've had changeover in our office, but I just want to thank Kathy Manning and Dawn Clay. They've come in throughout the summer. And our newly appointed people, Kelly Crocker and Joanne Yell. And Julie Zalinski has taken over for Dawn Clay. They've done a remarkable job this summer in the preparation. So, and I just want to personally thank them for making our office complete and also thank Kathy Manning and Dawn Clay. It just shows you the type of commitment and dedication of our employees that are willing to retire, but they've been coming back and helping us out, so that's it.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.